Okay, good evening. Can everyone hear me? Or can just somebody acknowledge that they can hear me?
We can hear you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so as we started this evening, I noticed that we already have cell phone rings. Certainly not blaming anyone, but what really helps us with back hearing voice is people can pass down their work areas and home areas as we begin. So if you have a cellphone, if you can put it on silent, mute please, or switches in the back, take care of that. Um, then we'll get you in a second. I'm still hearing some pretty strong background noise right now. Okay, good evening. Welcome to the Thursday, August 19th, 2021, 6 o'clock PM, remote participation meeting of the Auburn zoning board of appeals. My name is Robert Pedro. I am the chair and I am calling this meeting to order. If you would like to join us this evening, please do so by calling 1-646-749-3112 using access code 944571349. You can also join by computer by going to GoToMeeting, clicking on the "Join" logo, entering "meeting number 944571349", and you can join the main remotely there. So I have a script I have to read. I'm gonna toggle over. Please be patient with me for one minute. And I'll begin reading my script. Okay, second. Here we are. Okay, so again, good evening. As a preliminary matter, this is Bob Pedro. I am the chair of the Auburn zoning board of appeals. In an effort to reduce background noise, I am asking that all of you please mute your phones at this time and only unmute if you're going to speak. Permit me to confirm that all members in person anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members of the zoning board, when I call your name, if you could please respond in the affirmative. Vice Chair Michael Maron.
Affirmative.
Uh, Mr. Chacola will not be joining us this evening. Richard Cussie.
Affirmative.
Great, thank you. Ms. Roach will not be joining us this evening. Mr. Jones, are you with us?
Affirmative.
Thank you. And Ms. Bush, are you with us?
I'm here.
Excellent, thank you. So to clear this up at the beginning of the meeting, because we do not have Mr. Chacola and Ms. Roach as the chair, I'm bringing back forward, Mr. Jones and Ms. Bush are alternative members. They will be full voting members of the board for the entire length of the meeting this evening. So for all three hearings and on to new minutes and other business. Um, with that being said, town officials and employees participating. When I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. If I do not call your name by mistake, I'll give you a second at the end to acknowledge your presence. Thank you. Uh, building, um, Commissioner Adam Manai.
Caleb Modi, but I'm here.
Oh, okay, Caleb Modi, thank you. Uh, DDI's building group Katrina Smalls.
Present.
Thank you, Katrina. Uh, do we have any other town employees here this evening that I just would like to acknowledge your presence?
We do not.
Great, thank you. So, good evening. This open meeting of the Town of Auburn zoning board of appeals, a Thursday, August 19th, 2021, now called Order at 6:00 PM. This meeting is being conducted in both person and remotely consistent with the Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, and extended on June 16th, 2021. For this meeting, zoning board of appeals is convening either in person or by remote participation for the public. For the purpose of joining this meeting, I'll repeat it. You can call 1-646-749-3112 and enter the access code 944571349 on the keypad of your phone. Or you can join us via computer at GoToMeeting.com, logging in where it says "Join" 944571349. Remote access information has been posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by the Auburn cable television and will be rebroadcast. Accordingly, those members of the zoning board of appeals, employees, and members of the public participate. Please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and please take care of that for screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recorder. Meeting materials, all supportive materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear communication. I, Robert Pedro, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members, inviting each by name and provide any comments, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Incidentally, we will also, uh, we look for a butters present as well, and sometimes usually first. So, um, lead members speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you. If members wish to engage in discussion, please do so through the chair and identifying yourself. So we'll first ask members of the public who wish to speak and identify their names. Once the chair has listed all public commenters, I will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Finally, each vote taken will be a roll call vote. If we have any technical difficulties, uh, we will suspend the meeting while attempts are made to resolve and repair, and keep accurate minutes noting any disconnections and reconnections during such outage. All right, with that being said, I believe I can go back to my agenda. Okay, and one second, please. Here we are. So, we have, um, three items on the agenda this evening. A 6:00 PM hearing, applicant Assad Al Bassam requesting a special permit under section 3.9.1.2 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a home occupation on property located at 63 Hampton Street, Auburn map, map six parcel 34. Uh, do I have a motion to open the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Michael Maron provides the motion. I'll make a motion to open the hearing.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Uh, Rich Cussie, second.
Thank you. So, uh, we will do a roll call vote. Um, Mr. Maron, how do you vote, sir?
I approve.
Mr. Cussie, how do you vote, sir?
Approve.
Um, let me see, Chair Cussie. Um, Mr. Jones, how do you vote?
Approve.
Uh, Ms. Bush, how do you vote?
Approve.
I vote to approve. Okay, so the hearing is open. Is the applicant present?
Through the chair.
Yes.
The applicant is present in the town hall.
Okay.
So I'll have her introduce herself now.
Yes, please, uh, if you want to manage that, end with the, uh, KDA access votes.
Yep.
Um, sir, if you could just approach the lectern, um...
Yep, she's already up at the, she's already up at the table, Mr. Chairman, so she can introduce herself right now.
Oh, okay, perfect. All right ahead, I'm gonna yield the floor to you.
Hi, how are you? So my name's Zahara Shimari. I'm his wife, Assad Al Bassam. So we have to do resident kitchen. So just, uh, we have to do like, uh, just a break. Sound good? Oh, okay. So, I don't know. So, did you have a question for me?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant would like to know if you have any specific questions.
So I would like to just review this paperwork in general for a moment. Um, I don't have any specific questions, so how I like to try to do this is I like to act as the facilitator, and I provide the, um, I provide any butters the opportunity to speak, and then we provide each member on the board to ask you questions. Um, so I'm basically kind of mediate if I can. Um, so again, we're getting some background noise. If somebody could be cautious about what's going on at their residence, please.
Mr. Chairman.
So...
There's multiple microphones in this room, so when they are live, you're gonna get a little bit of feedback.
I got you. Okay. Well, we'll do our best to work through it. I mean, we've managed to this point. This is another unique conference meeting, so we'll work through it. Well, just I hope, so we'll make sure everybody has patience with it and we'll get through it. Um, so do we have any butters present that would like to speak on behalf of this, um, application?
Are there any butters in the room that would like to speak?
Okay, second call for the butters. All right, I'm gonna give a countdown on the butters. Five, four, three, two, one. Hearing, I'm seeing none. I'm gonna move on. Uh, Vice Chair Maron, do you have any questions of the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, so, um, to the applicant, thank you for being here this evening and for application. Um, so do you plan on, um, any customers visiting your home, as I understand your application, which is an in-home bakery, is that correct?
Yes. So he's speaking to you.
Oh, okay, say again, sorry.
No problem. So, um, again, thank you for being here. Just a couple of questions. I understand your application forward is for in-home, is that correct?
He's asking if you're gonna have any customers visit the, the home.
Oh, not yet. Not yet.
No customers would be visiting the home.
Thank you and appreciate that, um, that help, um, Mr. Chairman. Um, so secondarily, um, are you planning any signage at the home to represent, uh, the, that you'll be in? So any signs advertised?
Any signs.
For what?
For your business.
No, no. I didn't hear anything because I'm just need to make sure if they accept our business or not.
No signs will be placed at the residence.
Okay, thank you for that confirmation. And then in brief that you shared with us, uh, you indicated that, um, you'll be using cars brought off to the stores and families, which I would assume. So could you describe your, your expectation for delivery, your thought on how you're gonna be delivering the product?
Can you talk about how you're gonna be delivering your products?
Okay, so the delivery, so my husband, he gonna do like deliveries by his car, but yeah, so we're gonna use just one car for delivery.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna reserve. I don't have any additional questions for the applicant at this.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cussie?
Yeah, um, your ingredients, are they gonna be delivered or are you gonna be picking up your ingredients to make the bread?
How will you get your ingredients to your home? Are they gonna be delivered to your home or are you gonna be picking them up?
Uh, delivering.
You'll be getting deliveries?
Yeah, he gonna do deliveries. So...
For your ingredients.
Oh, we have to pick up.
So they'll be picking their ingredients up.
Okay, I'm good for now.
Um, I'm sorry, I just wanna make sure we're still flowing. Mr. Cussie, do you have any other further questions?
I'm good for now, Bob. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Mr. Jones?
Uh, all of my questions have been asked and answered. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Bush?
All my questions have been answered. Thank you.
Okay. Well, um, go ahead. All right, so I have a question for the applicant. You said it's an Arabic bread. Um, so could you tell me a little bit about it? Is it, is it, um, is it, how is, what, what, what kind of oven are you using?
So what kind?
What type of oven will you be using?
So right now, so right now I'm gonna use my oven, temporary. If I see a lost customer, if I see I have a, in the future, a lost customer, so I'm gonna buy another one.
I got, yeah, okay. But no, that's understandable. I'm actually more curious. So it says it's an Arabic bread. Is it, what, what kind of, like, how could you describe it to us?
Um, that is a question.
Can you describe the type of bread you'll be making?
Yeah, it's Arabic bread. It's just like, uh, it's like simple stuff, so we're gonna use the... Oh, I forgot. So flour and water, salt, uh, uh, that's it, so...
So, see, what I'm asking is, it's a, so is it a, um, is it a bread like a loaf or is it a bread like a flat pancake?
He wants to know if the bread is flat or if it's in a loaf.
Flat.
It's flat?
Yeah, it's like circle. It's a flat.
An Arabic, a flat bread, okay?
Yes.
I'm just, I'm just curious to what type of processes, 'cause I do understand a little bit about this and what space requirements are. Um, I, I'm somewhat familiar with it, and that's why I'm asking those specific questions of what it would require you to have for equipment and managing the clean, you know, the cleanliness. Um, and we have had some things come up lately that we've allowed for home-based businesses like this. Uh, and our biggest concern obviously is pest control, um, and making sure that the things are stored properly. Um, I think those are one of the concerns that I share. Um, I'm sure that anybody else may, um, because we know that bakeries can get, you know, a lot of smell or a lot of things on the floor. Um, and I know it's, it's, it's just one of the, we wanna make sure these things clean.
Through the chair.
So, with that being... Yes, sir.
Sorry to interrupt. I do have a, I do have an email with some comments from the health director, if you'd like me to read that.
Could you please?
Sure. So this is from Darlene Coyle from the Board of Health. Um, her comments are, "The property owner has submitted a food application for the proposed bakery, but the application is still incomplete and needs some follow-up to the Board of Health to complete the permit requirements before we can act upon it." Uh, number two, "The Board of Health has the authority to license the residence as a residential kitchen as long as it meets the requirements for the type of food product allowed. It is our understanding that the proposed bakery is only going to be making bread. This is not a time-temperature-controlled food and therefore allowed in this type of operation." Comment three, "The property owner states that they're going to make deliveries to stores. This would not be allowed under the residential kitchen permit from the Board of Health. The owner would need a wholesale residential kitchen permit from the state Massachusetts Department of Public Health to do this activity, and I am not aware that they have obtained that permit." The residential kitchen, uh, the fourth comment is, "The residential kitchen is not intended to operate as a store with customers coming to the property." And the final comment, "The Board of Health will not issue the residential food permit without the ZBA approval of the special permit." Signed Darlene Coyle.
Okay, so what I took from that, thank you very much, Caleb. I do appreciate you reading that and bringing that to the board. Uh, so what my takeaway from that, um, email was that, uh, they have not applied for the state permit yet, which I kind of understand because you would wanna apply for the town permit before the state permit, I think, so we can make that as a condition. Um, the other item was the delivery, I think also becomes an issue, um, that, that members of the board may wanna talk about and make that a condition. Um, you know, even an unlettered, you know, a non-lettered vehicle or something plain or what, I don't know. And that's up to the board to discuss, discuss. Um, other members of the board, uh, Vice Chair Maron, what are the other takeaways you got from that email?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So mine are consistent with the notes that you had shared. I do appreciate that information coming forward uh, from the, um, head of our Department of Health and Inspection Services. Um, I'm, I'm comfortable that, um, Darlene's group, um, would keep things in check as far as what needed to be achieved. Um, I do have a follow-up question for the applicant, if I may.
Sure, absolutely, please.
So, so thank you, thank you, sir. To the applicant, um, understanding that you may swap out of equipment, um, are you, is there any substantive design within your home to accommodate commercial kitchens?
Uh, hold on. Vice Chair Maron, you're breaking up, and then somebody, it sounds like, might have a dog barking in the background.
Thanks for that feedback, uh, Mr. Chairman. So I'll repeat.
Get it clear now.
But, my, I'll repeat if I'm, if I'm coming through clear. My question is, um, recognizing that you may be swapping out some equipment, um, are you planning any substantive design or structural changes within the home to accommodate this commercial kitchen?
So the question is, are you planning any renovations in your home?
So are you gonna be changing your house at all, lock, lock, anything like this?
No.
The applicant has indicated there's no plan for renovation of any type at this time.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any questions at this point.
Okay, thank you. So I'll just go around one more time. Mr. Cussie, have you, uh, thought of any other further questions?
Yeah, I just had one. Um, the trash, is there gonna be a dumpster or anything, or, or just taking the trash out as usual?
So he's asking if you, you plan on having a large dumpster at the home or is he just using your household trash?
I'm gonna use my house trash right now.
There's no plan for any dumpster at the home.
Okay.
Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, just in case, one more time?
Uh, no questions, thank you.
Ms. Bush, just in case, one more time?
I don't have any questions.
Right, okay. And I, I don't have any further questions. It seems to me that this is consistent and in line with other small home-based businesses that, uh, we've in the past encouraged people to come forward, so we know that our Board of Health has an opportunity to work with them and, uh, sort of point them in the right direction and make sure everything is healthy. So, um, you know, with that being said, do I have, um, a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Michael Maron, I'll make a motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Do I have a second?
Uh, Rich Cussie, second.
Thank you. Mr. Maron, how do you vote?
I approve.
Mr. Cussie, how do you vote?
Approve.
Ms. Jones, how do you vote?
Approve.
Ms. Bush, how do you vote?
Approve.
And I vote to approve. The public portion of the hearing is therefore closed. Do I have a motion on the 6:00 PM applicant for Assad Al Bassam requesting a special permit under section 3.9.1.2 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a home occupation on property located at 63 Hampton Street, Auburn map, map six parcel 34?
Mr. Chairman, Michael Maron, I'll make a motion to approve, um, with standard conditions in addition to, um, adherence to, um, the conditions, uh, based on permits from our health department. In addition, uh, as a contingency, we might call out that customers will be exclusive just to private customers and not stores.
Sure.
And that future, um, future needs for any trash or disposal should be assessed through the health department.
Okay, so I just wanna repeat those because you did come, I, I picked it up, which is in case anybody else didn't. So we have standard conditions. We have the concerns raised in, uh, Ms. Coyle's email. Uh, the ones that I specifically pointed out earlier, I think were the ones that were on guide. Um, also, um, that in the event it pursues and moves forward, uh, the state permit for delivery would be required. And, um, the last one was, uh, to ensure that the trash is properly managed and expand as necessary for management if the business should grow. Was that right, Mr. Maron?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman.
Through the chair, if I'm, if I may?
Yes, you may.
Uh, would you consider adding the condition that no pickup be allowed at the residence?
Uh, yes, I believe that was something that Mr. Maron did say, and I admit. So there would be no, um, pickup of any finished product or sale, oh, yeah, no, no finished product out the door for pickup. Delivery only.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I, I would agree. Thank you, gentlemen. Well articulated. I would, I would amend my, um, my, um, my proposal to approve, um, as stated.
Great, thank you. So we have a, uh, a motion that has been clarified quite well, I think, on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second as amended.
All right, Mr. Jones has a second. So I have, um, Mr. Maron, how do you vote?
I approve as stated.
Mr. Jones, how do you vote?
Approve.
Mr. Cussie, how do you vote?
Approve.
Ms. Bush, how do you vote?
Approve.
I vote to approve. Congratulations and good luck. Hello?
Thank you. Thank you so much.
The applicant thanks the board.
Oh, great. So good luck. The Board of Health, um, and the Department of Special Services will be in contact with you, and you can make further from there. So good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. So we'll just give it a minute to kind of settle down. I'll start reading slowly what we're up to next. So we have a 6:05 PM applicant, John Breton, requesting a special permit under section 9.3.12 of the Auburn zoning bylaw to build an in-law apartment on property located at 12 Garden Street, Auburn map, map 48 parcel 53, if the applicant's present.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is also present in the town hall.
Excellent, thank you. Do I have a motion to open the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Michael Maron, I'll make a motion to open the hearing.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Yeah, Rich Cussie, second.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Vice Chair Maron?
I approve.
Um, Mr. Cussie?
Approve.
Um, Mr. Jones?
Approve.
Ms. Bush?
I approve.
I vote to approve. So, um, Mr. Breton, if you could, um, provide us an overview of what you'd like to try to accomplish. We'll open up for a butters and then we'll move on to the board.
Uh, it's gonna be a, um, in-law addition with a master bedroom, master bedroom on the second floor. Um, it's gonna connect on the left side of the house. Um, there's gonna be a bathroom, a mast, uh, master bedroom, living area on the first floor, and like I said, a, um, a master bedroom on the, uh, second floor with a, uh, with a basement, um, a full basement on the bottom.
Okay, um, so we're gonna have, the plans are being set up so we can view them all together here. Um, are there any butters present while we're preparing these plans for viewing that may like to speak on this matter? Could you introduce yourself, please?
Are there any butters in the room? No.
Second call for butters. Okay, I'll do a countdown for butters. Five, four, three, two, one. So we appear to have no butters present. I'm gonna move over to Vice Chair Maron, sir. If you could discuss your, um, issues or concerns with the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So before I address questions to the applicant, Caleb, I wonder if you could, could just help for my clarification and for the board. The application in, in front of us, um, I understand that this is, this is being proposed as a, as an apartment. Um, is this application for an apartment or just a structural addition to a residence?
Through the chair. So the way I understand it is they'll be adding an accessory apartment and at the same time adding a master bedroom to the main home on the second level.
Okay, so our focus would be the square footage of the accessory apartment, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir. I appreciate that clarification. And so, so to the applicant, what's the square footage of the accessory apartment?
Approximately 600 square feet on the first floor.
Okay, and so the accessory apartment will just occupy the first floor, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and, um, the, the means, the plan, the means of, we have two means of egress, um, to the apartment, is that correct?
You'll have a means of egress through the main house. You'll have a means of egress through the side entrance to the, uh, apartment. And then you'll have a means of egress through the basement as well.
Okay, so, so one primary means of egress to the apartment itself. And if the others that you described are actually egress through the house, is that...
Correct.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
If I may, we may have, we may have to discuss that, but we can iron that out through the building permit process. Um, I don't know that the second means of egress can go through the home. Um, but that's something we can iron out with the applicant when he, when he applies for his building permit.
Yeah, I do believe you're right. I believe that I have to have, um, two separate means of egress, correct? It can't, it can't be into an adjoining separate part of the house as far as legal fire code goes.
That's, that's, that's correct.
It could be working in the flame. Okay, I appreciate you bringing that forward, and also, Mr. Maron, while I'm at it, I appreciate you clarifying the fact that we're putting a bedroom on one side of the house and the, um, the, the in-law proposal is separate. So the square footage may be a little bit more to work with than what we usually do, but we can keep that in mind. So thank you very much for bringing that up as well. Uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Maron, do you have anything else for the applicant?
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman. I thank the applicant for his answer and I'll reserve. Thank you.
Mr. Cussie, sir, to you?
Yeah, um, what about parking? Is the driveway gonna be changed at all or is it gonna stay the same?
Relatively saying yes. It's gonna stay the same.
Okay. I'm good for now, then, please. Okay, Mr. Jones?
Uh, thank you. Um, how many off-street parking spaces do you have for, for the entire property?
How many cars can you fit in your driveway? We can, we can fit four cars in our driveway.
Mr. Jones, did you catch that? Four cars in the driveway.
There'll be no need for any on-street parking.
Okay, yeah, I was just checking out section H there. That's it, thanks.
Ms. Bush?
Um, what's the square footage of the existing house?
Squared, I'm sorry, squared.
Square footage of the existing home?
Uh, about 1,300 square feet. Right around 13.
Okay, I don't have any further questions.
Thank you very much, okay. I actually don't have any either. I think most of my concerns are brought up by the other members of the board. It's usually that general kind of questions that revolve around these projects. Obviously shows no setback issues, you know, all space requirements are made around it. So with that being said, do we have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Michael Marin, I'll make a motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second, Captain.
Mr. Cuzzi, second, thank you. Mr. Marin, your votes are?
I approve.
Okay, Mr. Cuzzi, your votes are?
Approve.
Mr. Jones, your votes are?
Approve.
Uh, Ms. Bush, your vote, ma'am?
I approve.
Yeah, I approve. So the public portion of the hearing is now closed. Do I have a motion on 6:05 PM applicant, John Breton, requesting a special permit under section 9.3.12, the urban zoning bylaw, to build an in-law apartment on property located at 12 Garden Street, Auburn, MAP, MAP 48 parcel 53?
Mr. Chairman, we're discussing before I make the motion, I'd just like the board, for the board's benefit, to hear my thoughts. So I, in general, don't have a problem with this application as it's being presented, recognizing that we're focusing on the accessory apartment portion. If in fact it lands around 600 square feet, then it's certainly well within our bylaw for an accessory apartment, and I leave it in Caleb's hands to work out through the building permitting process. The only, the only rub that I would have is the second means of direct egress to the apartment, but again, through the permitting process, I think that would be satisfied. So thanks for listening to that. I will, I'll move forward unless there's any other comments from board members, I'll move forward with the motion.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor to approve with standard conditions and the concerns that Mr. Marin raised during his presentation. Do I have a second on that?
Yeah, Rich Cuzzi, second.
Thank you very much. Mr. Marin, how do you vote?
I approve as stated.
Mr. Cuzzi, how do you vote?
I approve.
Mr. Jones, how do you vote?
Approve.
Ms. Bush, how do you vote?
Approve.
And I vote to approve. So good luck, sir. Caleb will be in contact with you. You'll be able to move forward to the next step, and all the appropriate documentation will be available in the town hall.
Thank you. Great, thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, so moving on to our 6:10, excuse me, applicant, Gabriel M. Gogius, I hope I said that right. If I did not, I sincerely apologize, requesting a special permit under section 9.3.12, the urban zoning bylaw, for an accessory apartment on property located at 150 Bryn Mar Ave, Auburn, MAP, MAP 32 parcel 111. Do I have a motion to open the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Michael Marin, I'll make a motion to open the hearing.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Rich Cuzzi, second.
Thank you. Mr. Marin, how do you vote?
I approve.
Mr. Cuzzi, how do you vote?
Approve.
Uh, Mr. Jones, how do you vote?
Approve.
Ms. Bush, how do you vote?
Approve.
And I vote to approve. And the applicant's question?
Through the chair, the applicant is present here in the town hall.
Okay, great. Would you like to, I feel before you, would you like to please go over your proposal and discuss the questions with the board or any others?
Sure. I have had an optometric practice in the building since 1990. I've retired, my son took over the practice, and moved it to another location. So what I am hoping to do is to convert the former, formerly optometric office space into a small accessory apartment. It has two means of egress. It already has a small bathroom, so we would enlarge that so that we could also have a bathtub and obviously put in a kitchen. The footprint stays exactly the same. We have four parking spaces that, you know, are left over from the office, and so those would, and that's off-street parking that tenants could use. And, you know, I know it's up to code with all the smoke alarms and all of that stuff that we had to do to, you know, have the office be legal. So it really is more just bringing in the appliances and some additional plumbing to make it into an apartment. And it's about 650 square feet.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and ask if there are any butters present that might have concerns or questions regarding this application? Uh, one more time, second call for butters. Hearing none, seeing none. I'll give a countdown. Five, four, three, two, one. Vice Chair Marin, to you, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And so to the applicant, I did have an opportunity to take a look at the property, and I've been by there many times. And so, understanding there's no structural or footprint changes planned, is that?
Correct.
Do you have, do you have plans that you can share with us this evening to show the layout of the proposed apartment?
I'm sorry, I have trouble hearing the feedback.
Do you have any plans that show the layout of the apartment?
Yes, actually, I do. Is there like a camera that looks at it? I don't know how. So what we will be doing is there are two non-load-bearing walls, and I've marked those in sort of a pinkish with a big X mark through it. So two small walls come down, and one new wall goes in in between so that we have bigger space. And then there's a couple of doors that go in. But anything green, I tried to color-code it, anything green is new. Anything red is eliminated, and everything else stays the same. So anything that's black is what's there and will remain there.
Okay, thank you for that. I don't have, I don't have a copy of the plan in front of me, and it may have been, but I don't have it. But recognizing if, if the apartment does in fact stay below or meet our bylaw requirements, then I would move it for the building commissioner through the permitting process to make sure that egress and all the codes is satisfied. So thank you, ma'am. Mr. Chairman, I don't, I'm prepared, I don't have additional questions if this...
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cuzzi, to you, sir?
Yeah, do you presently live at the home?
Yes, I do.
Very good, thank you. No more questions to make.
Okay, Mr. Jones?
Um, thanks.
And to you, Ms. Bush?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, so I will say that I have, I've run this business many, many years ago. I have not been recently, and I am familiar with the layout of the building. I have no financial background, therefore I do not accuse myself. I have not purchased any items there, et cetera, for quite a long time. But being familiar with the inside and the outside of the building, and it really is a pretty nice little city, and it's designed well. So provided it's footprints and the building is satisfied with the layout and construction, I think we can again move forward by saying, you know, provided it meets our requirement, state codes, et cetera, probably move, that's how people feel about it. So with that being said, do I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Michael Marin, I'll make a motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Rich Cuzzi, second.
Thank you. Mr. Marin, um, oh, no, I'm sorry to go around. Yeah, Mr. Marin, how do you vote?
I approve.
Mr. Cuzzi, how do you vote?
Approve.
Mr. Jones, how do you vote?
Approve.
Ms. Bush, how do you vote?
Approve.
And I vote to approve. Public portion of the hearing is now closed. Do I have a motion on the 6:10 PM applicant, Gabriel Gogius, requesting a special permit under section 9.3.12, the urban zoning bylaw, for an accessory apartment on property located at 150 Bryn Mar Ave, Auburn, MAP, MAP 32 parcel 111?
Mr. Chairman, Michael Marin, with gratitude to Caleb for sharing the layout of the apartment a few minutes ago, I'll make a motion to approve the application with standard conditions.
Excellent. And might I add that all standard conditions and with design approval from the building commissioner, because we were not really able to see it that well.
I'm, it's amended as stated.
Thank you. And, okay, so do I have a second, please?
Doc Rich Cuzzi, second.
Thank you. Mr. Marin, how do you vote?
I approve as stated.
Mr. Cuzzi, how do you vote?
Approve.
Mr. Jones, how do you vote?
Approve.
Ms. Bush, how do you vote?
Approve.
And I vote to approve. Okay, ma'am, good luck with everything.
Thank you.
It goes well. And Caleb will be in contact with you and give you further instructions on how you can get the rest of the paperwork and everything squared away, and good luck moving forward.
Terrific, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so with that being closed, on to other business. We have minutes to accept from 6:17:21 and 7:15:21. Do I have a motion to accept and approve the minutes as written and submitted on those days?
Mr. Chairman, Michael Marin, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as stated.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Doc Rich Cuzzi, second.
Thank you. Mr. Marin, how do you vote?
You can call the office tomorrow.
Mr. Cuzzi, how do you vote?
Call the office tomorrow.
Approve. Um, Mr. Jones, how do you vote?
Approve.
Ms. Bush, how do you vote?
Approve.
And I vote to approve. Okay, so minutes have been approved. So I noticed that we got, real quick, on to a little bit of a new business, we received a packet of zoning bylaws, date appearing indicate the town media which amendments these sections were voted on. So these zoning bylaws, page 1 to 151, with amendments as of May 4, 2021. So just go through them. I know that they're, they're just updated versions, but make sure everything is consistent with what you have in front of you before you replace or discard anything so we can stay consistent with what we have during our meetings. So please just be cognizant of that. Also, I believe, I don't really know groups that don't have the email in front of me, but we still have maybe one or two people that need to complete their EPIC training, please. Again, pretty straightforward, takes about an hour, probably less if you kind of, you know, go through it and stay focused. It's pretty easy, straightforward, and really only the last, maybe, I think it's 15 or 20 questions really apply to the volunteer portion, which we really fall under. But if you haven't done that yet, if you do so, please, before the next meeting, would appreciate it. Otherwise, I don't have anything else. So our next meeting is September 16, 2021. And with that being said, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, Michael Marin, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Rich Cuzzi, second.
Thank you. Mr. Marin, how do you vote?
I approve.
Mr. Cuzzi, how do you vote?
Approve.
Mr. Jones, how do you vote?
Approve.
Ms. Bush, how do you vote?
Approve.
And I vote to approve. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much. It was a nice meeting for a new methods that we had this evening. So thank you very much for your added and continued participation.